This is the regular meeting of the Sandpoint City Council. I now call to order in council chambers at City Hall, 1123 West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I'm Mayor Shelby Ronstadt presiding. Also present are council members Shannon Sherman, Deb Rule, Joel Espiro, John Darling, Kate McAllister, and Andy Groot. Will now rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for coming to participate today. We haven't seen the chambers this full in quite some time. So I hope you enjoy the show. First, our announcements. Are there any announcements from council? Okay. And for me, how about staff?
A couple of brief announcements. Mr. Mayor, City Hall renovations on the first floor of City Hall for our customer service remodels started this week. So for public coming into City Hall for city business in the day or for council meetings, our entrance to City Hall for the next several months will be on the council chamber side, the entrance to fire and police. Our front doors will be closed until we reopen for the first floor remodel. And second, we have another staff announcement, and I'll hand it over to Amanda. It is related to actually a park space that many people don't know about. It's our, we call it our secret park because it's currently unnamed, at the end of Matty Lane. And there is a development going in the area that we are looking at options for, actually for a parking area and better access to that parking area. And so it's nice access down to Sand Creek. So if public members haven't been down to that area, I encourage you to go, especially at the hot times. It's typically cooler down there. And it's beautiful, open space that we open as part, we own as part of our park system. Hand it over to you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. We anticipate some activity in the area in the coming weeks and just wanted to give everyone an update as to what's happening and why, and a little bit of background. As Jennifer mentioned, the location is specifically north, directly north of the Schweitzer Roundabout. As you can see on the map in front of you, this area here, this parcel, is actually city property and a city park. It is unnamed, as Jennifer mentioned. It became city property in 2016 formally as the result of the subdivision development here, known as Cedars at Sand Creek. So that was a dedication to the public associated with that project. At this time, the access is pedestrians only. It ends at the end of Matty Lane. The intent has always been with that development to continue Matty Lane to the north to provide access both to the park as well as these three lots that you see here. In the coming weeks, we anticipate seeing some clearing of trees here to be able to accommodate that continuation of the road construction. And we're continuing to work with the engineers and contractors as far as the final design. We're looking at multiple options. One would be to continue Matty Lane as it's shown here, if you can see that well enough. The alternative option, if the engineering pencil's out, would actually take the access directly off of Schweitzer Roundabout. There's just some steep slopes in there, so we need to see if that's viable or not. But nonetheless, there will be some activities from a tree perspective here in the near future and signs letting folks know that there's some activity going on.
I would just note for that, we had a presentation last night at our Planning and Zoning Commission training regarding PUDs. And this was actually the last PUD that we've done at the city as for Cedars. I think we'll be seeing a PUD come through this year, but it's been several years. And this is a good example of PUDs come through when developers are typically looking for for options that aren't currently available with code. But in exchange for those options, there needs to be public benefit. So in this case, there were some smaller lot sizes granted and some other options as part of this development. In exchange, there was the dedication of this open space to the city for park property. And again, it borders Sand Creek there and is a nice place for people with younger kids looking to get down there because it tends to be more shallow. And it's also an area that's commonly used for people with dogs, kind of a dog park, access to water there for dogs as well. So it's a nice open space as part of our park system.
Great, thank you. We also have a presentation this evening from Nicole Goes, who's our HR Director here at the city. And she has an employee recognition presentation she's going to give to us. Thanks, Nicole.
We received many compliments and words of praise for our employees from our citizens. On behalf of our citizens, we appreciate the effort and the time they have put into their professional development. One of our adopted strategic priorities has been investment in and support for further development of our employees throughout the city. They have each displayed great enthusiasm to learn and grow professionally. To show our appreciation for their hard work and conduct, we would like to present each of them with a certificate of recognition for their accomplishments. We will be making our presentation by division. And I would ask the division head to join me in recognizing your staff and accept certificates on behalf of those who were unable to attend. But first, we have several employees in the IDS Division receiving recognition today, and our director's over here. So I'll just have him stay seated. I'll hand him over to you. In the Utility Services Group, we have Quentin Duncan, who passed an exam from the Idaho, from the Idaho Board of Drinking Water and Wastewater Professionals to obtain his wastewater collection operator class three license. And next, in the Planning and Building Services Group, we have Sean Carey, who passed the International Code Council exam to become certified as a Fire Inspector One. I hear that's a really hard task, too. And in the Street Services Group, we have Jason Calderon, who completed the LTAC Road Master Program, which is designed to provide participants with the fundamentals of safety management and advanced technologies relevant to the transportation field.
Great.
Then finally, we have one employee in our Police Division, Haley Saberin, being recognized today for her completion of the Essential Animal Services Training Academy, which included 80 hours of training and passing several tests along the way to become a certified animal control officer. Cory, I'll bring her to get back to you. And that's all we have today. So congratulations to these employees.
All right.
Thanks, Nicole. Next is a presentation from Rob Hart, who's the new Executive Director of Bonner County Housing Agency, who provided a presentation on new programs and strategies to address local housing needs. Mr. Hart, floor is yours. Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you. See if I can become technologically proficient here. Is that sharing now?
It is. It might take just a moment.
I'll let it catch up with me. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, my name is Rob Hart, and I am the Executive Director of the Bonner Community Housing Agency. The city administrator asked me to come and talk to you tonight about what the agency is doing about the housing crisis. We all know that quality housing is hard to find at a price that locals can afford. In the past, the agency has focused on very low income and low-income subsidized housing, often referred to as affordable housing. The agency will continue those programs. However, they operate at a disadvantage due to rising land costs and rising construction costs. But what about locals with good jobs, who have modest savings and who perform critical services in our neighborhoods? They are an essential part of the fabric of our community, and yet now they are shut out of the housing market. And the reasons are well-known. Number one, any reasonably priced home that comes on the market is usually snapped up right away by some wealthy out-of-state buyer, sight unseen with no regard to cost. And number two, many locals who see what's going on offer their properties for sale higher than the appraised value. And then this sets a new threshold above the level at which locals can afford. Resort towns across the nation are troubled by these rising home prices that bypass the local workforce. But now, the agency has taken the lead in solving this dilemma right here in Sandpoint by creating the Income-Based Local Housing Program. Under this program, homes are reverse engineered and deed restricted to be affordable to locals and available only to locals. Our first project is already in process, and you'll be hearing about that soon. Tonight, though, I'd like to explain how it all works so that when our projects come before you, you'll know what we're talking about. Landowners, employers, and philanthropists can help the community and make a good return on their investment by getting involved with the agency's programs. The basis of our programs is that some homes should be priced based on what locals can afford, not on what the market will bear. This is not a requirement that we impose on a property owner or a community. Instead, it's voluntary. And it creates new housing that exists outside of the boundaries of market-based housing. This middle market is where the costs and values make fiscal sense if we control them carefully. And it's this middle market where we can have the greatest impact because the entire region benefits when the middle class is supported. So how does the program work? The first step is for a landowner or employer to meet with the agency. We're a nonprofit community housing development organization chartered by the state to develop local housing in Bonner and Boundary County. We will evaluate your situation and let you know if the program would be a good investment by providing you with customized budgets and site plans. And we do this at no cost. Then you can decide if you want to continue to work with us or if you want to use our budgets and site plans to guide you and get started on your own. Each home in our program is built to meet the requirements of a specific class of buyer. We have single-family homes, twin homes, townhomes, group homes, and other creative types of low-density housing. All homes are custom-designed for each project. In some project, all the homes follow our program. In others, only some do. This is up to the landowner and the employer. The program is flexible. It does not force a buyer into a particular product, and it does not force an employer or a landowner to build a certain product. Now, I'd like to quickly go over some of the details so you'll understand how we arrive at home prices. We begin with the bedroom plus-one theory. To determine the qualifying income, we consider that each home has the capacity of the number of bedrooms plus one. Thus, a three-bedroom home can serve a four-person household, whether it does or not, whether it's occupied by one or not, we use that. And this allows us to go to the four-person column of the state median income data for Bonner County to get our area median income for that three-bedroom home. In this case, it's $64,500. The agency does not restrict household size. All are welcome, provided they meet the income and residency requirements. In each community we create, we work with the landowners and employers to learn what type of products that they would like. In this case, whoops, go back one. Sorry about that. In this case, we have a landowner who wants twin homes to be affordable to locals that make 20% less than median income. Our twin homes have three bedrooms, so we take the AMI from above and multiply it by 80% to get the qualifying income. In this case, it's $51,600. Then we divide that by 12 and multiply by 30% to get the monthly housing allowance. This means that we don't want locals to spend more than 30% of their income on housing. Now, we reverse engineer the home so that it fits into the monthly housing allowance. For this, we make a broad assumption, just for the purposes of the formula, that a buyer will put down 20% and finance 80% using a typical 30-year mortgage at current interest rates. So this formula creates a twin home purchase price of $382,500. This formula is only used to set the purchase price of the home. We understand some buyers will not have the 20% down payment. And that's where the flexibility of the program comes in. We also understand that not having all of the down payment means our target buyer may not be able to afford the restricted price. So we often offer a price that is a little below the one generated by the formula. And what I'm trying to say is, this sets the maximum price. You'll often see prices that'll come in under what the maximum formula generates. We like to create neighborhoods that combine a mix of products. So here's an example of a neighborhood mix. And you can see, as you go through the list, that most of the homes are targeted for those making less than median income. The qualifications for buying an income-based home are set by the landowner or employer. Typical qualifications are, your income must be within 5% of the home's AMI rating. You must have been a resident of Bonner or Boundary County for a period of years. You must have held a job that serves the community for a period of years. You must be a citizen of good standing in the community. You must occupy the home as your personal residence. And you cannot sell the home for some period of years. The landowners and employers get to choose the number of years for each requirement. But the Income-Based Local Housing Program is not just about numbers. The top priority is that our projects respect the environment. And that respect comes in many ways. First of all, we survey existing trees. We do not clearcut the site before development. We try to save as many large, healthy trees as possible. Second, we create development standards to guide the architectural design. Our homes are not large. They're not tiny homes, but they're no larger than they need to be. Then we create a critical path chart so our projects can stay on track. Our clients love seeing those circles turn green as we make progress. And we offer oversight, quality assurance, and cost-control services, which are key to making sure the construction stays true to the business plan. It's a combination of all these things and more that help make it possible to build quality homes that locals can afford. Thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Counsel, any questions?
I have questions. So do you have any landowners who are signed up yet? And is this modeled after another program in the U.S.?
This is, first question, yes, we do have a landowner signed up. And we are looking for others. We're looking for employers and landowners. And yes, this is modeled after a program that I developed in another state that was successful and won some awards.
Okay, because I've been, this is my passion now, is affordable housing. And so I've been watching all kinds of webinars from all over the west and Park City and Vail and all the ones that are resort towns. And so it sounds like a really great program, and I hope we can, where's your funding going to?
These projects are not subsidized. These projects are funded by the project itself. So a landowner, when I say they invest land into our project, that doesn't mean they're giving it to us or they're donating it or contributing it. We're going to show them how to add value to their land through our project. And so what happens is, you'll see some of the homes are at the 120% of median income. Those are the higher ones, and they help support the ones that are lower. So we balance it out. So it's not just all ones that are below median income. It helps if you have some that aren't. But I also know quite a bit about building efficiently and bring that knowledge here and show people how we can not necessarily design the largest home that will fit on any particular lot. And so the homes are in the, anywhere from 900 to about 1,400 square feet. And they range in prices, for example, from about $275,000 up to $550,000. But the price is based on income, not on what the market will bear.
Do you know how soon we can get these houses here?
We were beginning that process now. And I don't think it's going to be before next year. But the more landowners that come forward that are ready to move on a fast-track basis, the sooner we can get them out there. And these are projects that take some time. We have a policy at the agency that's called "start slow and finish fast" because we do a lot of things like this environmental analysis and studies of the trees and studies of how does the drainage all work on the land before we come in there and do anything so that we help to respect the environment.
Thank you.
Any other questions, counsel?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Appreciate that presentation.
Thank you.
All right, we'll now proceed with the public forum portion of the meeting, which allows the public to address the mayor and counsel regarding items listed on the consent calendar and items not on the agenda. This is not the time to speak on specific items listed on the agenda, to be clear. If you'd like to speak on such an item, please wait until we reach that item during the regular meeting. Before we proceed with the public forum at this time, I will take just a moment to recite the rules and procedure for public comment during Sandpoint City Council meetings, during both public forum and during other opportunities for public comment during the meeting. To accommodate those who wish to speak on general items during the public forum, as well as those who wish to speak on specific business items on our agenda, a total of 20 minutes will be dedicated to public forum at the beginning of the meeting. If you'd like to speak and did not have an opportunity to do so, we will give everyone an opportunity to speak by reopening the public forum at the end of our regular agenda. So please note, if you are participating by Zoom, you'll need a working microphone in order to participate, and you'll need to use the "raise your hand" option if you'd like to be called upon to speak. When your name is called, you will see a prompt on your screen to unmute. You will need to press or click the unmute button in order to be heard. For those participating here in person, if you wish to speak, you'll need to complete a sign-up form and hand it to the clerk. The forms are available on the table by the door. In the interest of time, please do not repeat prior comments made by others, but simply state your support for those comments. Comments shall not be personally derogatory, nor shall they be personally directed to any individual organization or business. Public comment opportunities during meetings are for comments only. Please do not direct any questions to the mayor or council or to staff during your comments, and do not approach the dais. If you have any materials for counsel, please hand them to the city clerk up front here. Each speaker will be allowed a maximum of three minutes, which will be counted down using our handy timer stoplight. The green light will indicate one minute remaining. The yellow light indicates 30 seconds left. And when the light turns red, your time has expired. Is there anyone who would like to speak during the public forum this evening?
Mr. Mayor, no one has signed up to speak during public forum.
Okay. That concludes our public forum for this evening. We will now proceed with the consent calendar. For the record, the total amount of bills is $893,343.15 for regular payables. Are there any items counsel wishes to remove from the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question. How about some of the stuff on the consent calendar? I guess I would direct this toward Jennifer, most likely. The item 6C, the amendment proposed is to increase the total compensation for ITD consulting. I read through all the details in there. And what I can gather is, we started at a fee of about, well, less than $20,000. And then we slowly have chunked on top of that to end up now at $95,000. And I was hoping you could give me a clearer explanation other than just COVID happened as to why what of original contact seems to have ballooned out of control to me.
Our original contract with ClientFirst, which is a firm nationally that works with cities on IT audits as well as consulting around IT services. We contracted with them initially to do a comprehensive IT and GIS audit for the city. And the amount of that audit was less than $20,000. We had a number of recommendations through that audit, including a transition from our server-based communication system to cloud-based for taking us to 365, Microsoft 365, deployment of laptops, all of our ability to function remotely. It changes here in council chambers and others. And their role was specifically assisting us with the implementation of some of those projects. The majority of time has actually been spent with implementation, moving us from server-based to cloud-based 365. So their team has assisted our local IT provider in making that change, as well as assisting and advising us on changes related to council communications and our ability to have remote participation in our meetings. They have consulted and provided assistance and transition oversight relative to fire services and bringing that from separate services onto the city service system. So they've assisted pretty much with all of our technology efforts over about the last 12 months, many of them COVID-related and supported by our CARES Act funding. This is a final addition to what they're doing, basically closing out their work with us. We anticipate that they're done with consulting services with the city in the next two months.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
They're moved. Second.
They're moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? This will be a real call vote.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Groot?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spurrel?
Yes.
Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing on a request from Pondray Peddlers, City Application Number P2021-0386, for authorization to construct a single-track hiking and biking trail on city-owned property. A notice of public hearing was published in Bonner County Daily Bee, the city's official newspaper of record, on June 15, 2021. We'll start with a presentation and explanation from city staff regarding this request.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will keep my presentation relatively brief. The applicant is here this evening and will provide a summary of their request. And you have received all of the content via a staff report that was published as well. So I'm just going to highlight some key components of that staff report, and then we'll open it up for any questions as well. As the mayor has indicated, we received an application from the Pondray Peddlers for the construction of a single-track hiking and biking trail within the city's little Sand Creek watershed. The watershed, as you're well aware, is located outside of city limits. It's actually in Bonner County. However, city code Title VII, Chapter 16, governs our watershed, specifically the protection and access within it. The proposed activity is considered recreational and requires construction of a new trail, as well as long-term maintenance of that trail. And therefore, within our code, it's considered a regulated activity that requires an issuance of a city permit prior to any of that work occurring to make sure that our best management practices are being enforced and complied with, as well as, before issuing a permit, providing the public, as well as city council, the opportunity to consider really two primary factors. Number one is the proposed use a public benefit. Number two, will the proposed use and activity have any harmful impacts on our water systems? Being that this is our primary, or a primary source of drinking water. So with that, the staff report has detailed the application as far as the dates the application was received, the associated notice of a 30-day public comment period as required by our code, in addition to the public hearing that we're having this evening, as well as notification to all regulatory agencies. In short, the project is referred to as the Lower Basin Build Phase One. In the application, it's referred to as the Green Trail. And it is approximately 2.4 miles in length, or a total of .969 acres of ground disturbance. The location, from a map perspective, which we'll look at here, the proposed trail network is between, first I'll show this first map. If you're not familiar with the watershed, it's located along Schweitzer Mountain Road, just to the north of town. And the trail itself is located to the east, northeast of Schweitzer Mountain Road, between Switchbacks 2 and 4, as locally referred to. As you're aware, city council recently adopted regulations and policies and a plan all related to activities within the watershed. So as far as staff's analysis and reviewing this application, we looked at both Title VII, Chapter 16, the watershed protection and access provisions, as well as the adopted watershed permit procedures and the watershed management plan. And ultimately determined that the requested application complies with all three of those sections from a staff's analysis perspective. As far as public and agency comments, to date, we have received 111, at the time this was posted, public comments in favor of this requested use. We've received zero that are neutral or in opposition. At the time the staff report was posted, we had only received a single response from the listed agencies, and that was IHD with the applicant responding to any of their questions and concerns. Since then, we also received a letter from the Department of Environmental Quality that was uploaded to this packet over the weekend or on Monday, Tuesday. Tuesday, I believe. The days are all mixed up this week. So that is within the packet. And we can go over those provisions as well. But in short, staff has included in the packet a proposed list of conditions for city council to consider. Essentially, staff is recommending that you consider approving this use with the seven conditions that have been listed in the staff report, ultimately resulting in issuance of a permit that would be in the form of a watershed access agreement. So it's a document formalizing these conditions and really expanding upon them to ensure compliance with our watershed management plan. Things like BMPs, making sure that erosion and sediment control plan is adhered to and that we're really meeting those water quality provisions. In addition, staff is asking that city council consider the liability components of a trail, an additional trail within the watershed, and have provided some language from legal counsel regarding our protection under the Idaho recreational use statute. And requesting that you consider either adding an additional condition or related to additional insurance or potential limitations on the type of features within the trail itself. And I do want to highlight, because it was recently uploaded, the response from the Department of Environmental Quality. As they've noticed or noted in their project specific comments, Idaho DEQ does not have best management practices specific to trail building. That's why our watershed management plan pulls together a variety of standards to try and address those best management practices specific to trail building. Fundamentally, what DEQ is most concerned with is ensuring, as they've noted here, that the proposed trail building and maintenance focuses on BMPs that reduce sediment delivery to the stream channels. And that is really incorporated via that erosion and sediment control plan, which we will work with the applicant on as a condition prior to any work, as well as the time of year that construction can occur to try and mitigate any risks and associated with heavy rainfall. So with that, that is our staff summary. Again, the applicant does have a presentation this evening, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have prior to their presentation.
Thank you, Amanda. Appreciate that. Next, we'll hear from the applicant represented by represented by Jason Walker, who's here with us tonight. Mr. Walker, if you please approach the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thank you, Amanda. I think Amanda highlighted a lot of what I wish to just kind of reiterate with you briefly tonight. Wait for my screen to come up. First of all, just a quick background on how we got here. This has been well over a year process. I started in this position as executive director of Pondray Peddlers a year ago, April, and almost immediately reached out to the city to express interest in this project. At the time, I was hopeful that we would get to do it last summer. Of course, that was a little naive of me. But over the subsequent 15 or 16 months, we've worked with the city on their environmental analysis with some consultants who were fantastic to work with. And we were invited to all those meetings and involved in that process. So we had input, and we were also made aware of what we'd be facing when we eventually came to this point to submit this application. So I'm going to try to keep this brief. You may have noticed there's some Pondray Peddler members here tonight. This is our regular monthly club meeting, believe it or not, first Wednesday. So I invited them here to show their support for this. But we're going to head. We'll all be drinking beers at Matchwood soon. So a little background, if you aren't familiar with Pondray Peddlers. We were formed in 2004. We are Sandpoint Cycling Club and Trails Organization. We have around 300 active annually renewing members. And starting this year, we have a sponsorship program with 30 local business sponsors. Our primary activity is trail building and trail maintenance. We have about 30 to 40 local trail work parties each year on private property in the existing trail network on city property. And with the Forest Service, we are working with the Forest Service on maintenance of trails that are popular with mountain bikers in particular. Starting last year, we began doing youth and after school clinics and summer camps. We have the next two weeks, we have summer camps with about 64 local kids participating. So that's just some of what we do. I wanted to share our vision, our mission and our core values with you. I don't think this will be the last time you hear from Pondray Peddlers for trail proposals. We have some other plans for the watershed property, of which there's over 5,000 acres of city owned property. We're really excited to work on those. I'll let you read these here. I actually just want to point out our core values. We're more than just mountain bikers or road cyclists. We really value these 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 things, health, quality of life, social and economic development, community and conservation. We believe that recreation is compatible with conservation and that by getting people into the woods, onto trails, we're protecting that resource for future generations. It becomes less likely that a resource will be developed for some other use if it's being used for recreation. So the watershed in particular, the city does, of course, depend on it for drinking water. It doesn't necessarily need to depend on the watershed for drinking water. I understand we get more than we need from the lake. But we value this. I think everybody agrees the water tastes better when it comes out of Little Sand Creek. But protecting that resource for water quality is actually really important to us as well. And in our view, recreation on narrow dirt trails is a is a low impact use of that resource that could is very much compatible with clean drinking water. Okay, Amanda shared a version of this, but I thought it'd be helpful just to let you see what the city owns in the watershed. The city of Sandpoint property, you can see Schweitzer Mountain Road on the right there. I believe that's a little over 5,000 acres. The neighbors in the watershed are the State of Idaho, Bureau of Land Management and the Forest Service and Schweitzer Mountain Resort, along with a couple of private landowners along the southern boundary east of Baldy Mountain. I've outlined the Lower Basin Trail Network there. There's currently about five miles of trails within that red square that Pondray Peddlers are responsible for the maintenance of. Up up higher is what we call the SRD Trails and the Schweitzer Mountain Resort Trails. POP also maintains trails high up on the watershed crest, which aren't included on this map, on Schweitzer Property and State of Idaho Property. So currently, Pondray Peddlers are the stewards of around eight miles of watershed trails. There are other trails on Schweitzer Property and the Selkirk Recreation District that are also technically in the Little Sand Creek watershed. Okay, let this picture load. All right, these are the existing trails in the zone where we wish to build a new trail. This is, you can see Switchback Four on Schweitzer Mountain Road. And it's not actually at Switchback Two, but everybody refers to it as a Switchback Two Trailhead. That's the bottom of the blue trail there. The blue trail is the existing trail that is known as Lower Basin XC for cross country. And then the red trail is Lower Basin DH for downhill. I want to share some figures with you before I show you the proposed trail. Actually, one of our former presidents is here tonight, Mike Murray. And he has, one of the things he has done for us over the years is monitor trail cameras. So last year, we had trail several trail cameras in the watershed. One was located just below the Switchback Four merger between the DH and the XC Trail. And in a 10 day period, at the end of July last year, that camera captured 1,950 individual mountain bikers riding these lower basin trails. So around 200 mountain bikers a day. And that that was just mountain bikers. There are quite a few trail runners, hikers, huckleberry pickers, that time of year, that also really enjoy our trails. So these trails are open for all non motorized users, of which about 200 a day were mountain bikers during this 10 day period. So just think about that from like an economic impact perspective as well. What are these? They're not all Sandpoint locals, of course, but the people who come from out of time, out of town are often coming here, spending money on our local businesses. And this is another interesting figure. I've studied data from Strava, which is a ride tracking app that is very popular among runners and. And from that data, we can determine that about 90% of the traffic on these lower basin trails is downhill traffic, which means those people had to get uphill and they didn't do it riding their bikes. So how did they do it? They drove up Schweitzer Mountain Road and used a vehicle shuttle to get downhill. That doesn't mean that people don't want to ride their bikes uphill. It just means that it's more dangerous to do so because there's only one trail for the last mile of the existing network. So there's a lot of uphill downhill user conflict. And it's the existing trail is not very enjoyable to ride your bike uphill. So what inspired this was the demand among our membership for an uphill friendly trail in the lower basin. And that brings us to the next slide where you can see the proposed route for that trail. It's actually after walking this, God knows how many times, the line that you see here is around 2.2 miles. It's not quite the two and a half miles that we originally estimated. This was the route that was most recently flagged in, I believe, early May when we walked this with our consultant, who was doing the wetlands delineation for the city, which was part of the application packet. So this is currently the route that we have planned. Of course, the reality, when you get down to the ground and start digging, it could deviate. So we told the city this is a 75 foot wide corridor. And that's what we walked with the wetlands consultant as well. So we were looking for evidence of wetlands and stream crossings along about a 70 foot wide, 75 foot wide corridor that you see here. And I didn't include streams on this, but there are six stream crossings, which are all seasonal. By now, they're probably all dry. But when we walked this in April and May, of course, there was running water in here. We are using the city's watershed management plan to guide our construction of this trail and all the crossings of those streams using the standard trail plan from the National Forest Services, which is what the city recommended. And they provide extremely detailed and very robust bridges for crossing streams like this. Okay, before I wrap up, I wanted to share a little history of how we got here. I don't want you to think that this was my idea or that this was not something that has been in the works for almost a decade, because it has been. This actually started back in 2013 when the Pondray Peddlers Board and member volunteers initiated the watershed crest trail vision. You've all been in the city for a while. You've probably heard of the watershed crest trail in the local papers or on local radio. Former POP board members have done interviews on KRFY about this trail. This is a vision that's been around for eight years now. And in fact, in 2015, city council passed a resolution in support of POP's watershed crest trail. And that's the language that was in that resolution. Then in 2017, Pondray Peddlers became a licensee of the city to actually maintain. We entered into a license agreement with the city to maintain the existing watershed trails. In that license agreement, there was language saying that any new trail construction would in the future need to come before city council for approval, which is how we got here. Last year, we built, actually, in the last three years, we've built almost three and a half miles of trails in the watershed, none of it on city property, about two miles on Schweitzer Property and another mile and a half on State of Idaho property, both of whom are very supportive. But those trails are in the Little Sand Creek watershed. And they're a part of the watershed crest trail, of which the proposed trail tonight is also a part. It's not so much on the crest, but it's how you get to the crest. Okay, so looking into the future, this is what we're calling Phase One of the Lower Basin Build Out, Build Out. This is going to be a multi directional trail. We want it to be around 2.2 miles in length. I expect a little less than a year from now, I might be back here proposing Phase Two, which is above Switchback Four. So city owns all the property below Switchback Six and all the way down to the end of Schweitzer Mountain Road, basically, or to the railroad. And and that's not true. And it's just where all those houses are. But next year, we hope to build another couple of miles of new trail in the lower basin. So there will be another application for that. And then in the future, in the next three or four years beyond that, we want to turn our attention up to the higher elevations and focus on that watershed crest trail as it was originally envisioned back in 2013. And we hope that in the future, we can start working on a watershed recreation master plan with the city. And we hope Pondray Peddlers can be a real integral part of that. Okay, in case you're wondering what the actual watershed is, it's outlined in green here. All the rain that falls within that green area ultimately makes its way to the Little Sand Creek. A lot of it ends up in the city's water treatment plant and then in our drinking water. So you can see the existing network there with Schweitzer Mountain Road in white. Everything along the rim up there is part of the watershed crest trail. We've currently made it from the Lower Switchback Two Trailhead. That's about 11 miles of trail up to the northwest corner, where you see the blue line ending on what's called Uliata Ridge. The ultimate vision for the watershed crest trail looks something like this. Another approximately 12 miles of trail from the Uliata Ridge around the crest of the watershed itself, just below the summit of Bald Mountain, out towards Micanic, and then ultimately tying into the existing road network lower down in the watershed. That that white road you see there is an existing road. It's not currently open, of course. We hope that someday that can be an access point to the watershed crest trail. That's just a version of the vision. This is based on the the maps and the lines that were created back in 2013. It's not my vision. This is something that POP's been working on for eight years. Okay, last slide. Get there. Yep, there it is. Okay, why support POP's plans? This project, you should know, is fully funded. And we've already been awarded an $18,000 grant from the Idaho Department of Parks and Rec, city of Sandpoint. Jennifer offered a great letter in our in our application for the state grant, committing the $10,000 that the city of Sandpoint already assigns for lower basin trail maintenance. It was decided that could be used for trail construction as well. We have a $6,000 grant from the Equinox Foundation, local foundation, and we've committed $2,400 in volunteer labor. That's a part of all of these projects. Of course, Pondray Peddlers will be. We estimate this project to take anywhere between 10 and 14 weeks. And you can bet that there will be 20 to 30 volunteers out there every single week during the duration of this project. That's a big part of what we do is community engagement. In our application for the state grant, we had letters of support from all the groups that you see here. So there's a huge amount of community and business support for this project and future projects involving trails in the Little Sand Creek watershed. And that's all I have. And if you have any questions, happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Any questions?
I don't have a question, Mr. Mayor, but I would like to say I greatly admire all of you. I'm so grateful for the trails because at 62, I ride my little cruiser and that's about it. And so I'm very envious, but your passion. And I think that the trails are in great hands with all of you because you do care about the environment. And I just really want to commend all of you and your hard work. And I often think of my friend, Dr. Bob Carlson, who, when he came before the state and city council and said, we want to build trails, they said, well, get shovels and do it yourself. And they did. So.
And that's how POP started as well.
Right. And so I'm very grateful for you. And that's that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yeah.
I'd also like to offer support, and you guys are doing great. I follow you guys on social media. And you guys have, everybody's got dirt on their hands and in their fingers and big smiles on their faces. This is stewardship. You guys have really, there are those that came before you, but you're here now and you guys are showing the example of what stewardship for Sandpoint and Bonner County for extra activities and looking forward to other generations of use. So I deeply, deeply appreciate it. Maybe before we end here, you give a plug for other new members that might be curious to get involved in more volunteering. It sounds like if this passes, then you're going to need some extra hands.
Oh, yeah, definitely. pondraypeddlers.org, join, get on our email list.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I'd like to acknowledge all the previous presidents of the Pondray Peddlers that came before Jason. And many of them were responsible for coming up with funds to actually provide the position as an ED, as a paid position for the first time in many years. It was a large hope. And we can see that once we get somebody on board who does this as their job, things start to move a little bit quicker. So I'd like to acknowledge all those previous presidents and hard workers and volunteers that have pushed this to a point where it's finally starting to overflow out of the bucket or something like that.
Any other questions?
All right, great. Thank you, Mr. Walker. Appreciate that presentation. That's really good. Okay, before the public hearing is open, I would remind the public of the public comment guidelines recited at the beginning of the meeting. If you're participating on Zoom and would like to speak, please raise your hand. If you are present here in the room and would like to speak, you'll need to complete a comment card signup form and hand it to the clerk. They're located at the front table up there. The clerk's right here. The clerk's right here in the front of the room. There is an opportunity, this is an opportunity for comments only. There are to be no questions asked of the mayor, council or staff or the applicant, please. If council members have any questions for you, they will ask those questions at the time you are speaking. Each speaker will have up to three minutes, but please, in the interest of time, do not repeat prior comments already stated. All right, Madam Clerk, are there any members of the public who wish to speak during the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, if you would officially open the public hearing, please.
And the public hearing is officially open.
Mr. Mayor, I do not have anyone signed up to speak during the public hearing.
Okay. And just to make sure that everyone's been given the opportunity that there's no one here that would like to speak during the public comment. All right. That concludes the public forum. And I'll give the applicant, not that there's anything to rebut, but if you want to provide any final comments, Jason, you're welcome to. Okay. Deliberation, does council have any final questions for the applicant? Okay. So the public hearing is now closed. No additional public comment will be taken and no additional questions may be asked of the applicant. Council will now deliberate and may ask questions of staff. I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution for issuance of the watershed permit for the lower basin build phase one. Is there a motion?
So moved.
They're moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay. This will be a roll call vote.
Councilwoman Spuro?
Yes.
Councilman Groth?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darling?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
Congratulations, POP. A long road, finally done. Yes.
Mr. Mayor? Councilwoman Sherman?
We have one point of clarification. Is that motion with the recommended conditions provided?
Oh, thank you for the clarity on that. So Amanda, could you, council, we have a decision point here. It's not simply a matter of approval or disapproval, but staff is specifically requesting that we come to a decision point on two points. Amanda, can you go over those again for us so that we're crystal clear on what's being asked of us?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi. Staff is asking, it sounds like there's a motion in favor of approving. The question before you is, staff has recommended some conditions associated with that approval that are in the staff report. And the resolution is drafted that those conditions are approved as presented. If you have any modification to those conditions or you would like additional conditions, now would be the time to incorporate those. Secondly, we have asked that city council consider the legal and liability aspects associated with requesting additional insurance from POP. Or if you would like to leave the proposed conditions as is, given the analysis that was in the staff.
Can we, yeah, thank you.
They're showing on my screen. I apologize. I thought you could see them.
So is that clear for council? And I welcome you to ask any questions if you need more clarity on what's being asked.
Can you give us a moment so we can read through?
And I'm happy to summarize each one of the seven real quick, if that's helpful. And then we can discuss. So number one is restricting the permit to phase one only. This isn't an approval beyond that. And that no ground disturbance shall exceed one acre. That the construction activities will occur this year unless otherwise approved by city staff. It may need to continue into the spring, so the language would be associated with that. And number three, that the conditions will comply with our city code as well as the management plan. We reserve the right to impose restrictions regarding working times to mitigate fire hazards. Item number five is that upon completion and throughout the construction, city staff and our consultants will inspect the work to ensure that it is indeed complying with the provisions of the issued permit. And then upon us accepting the trail as completed per those conditions, we would amend the license agreement to incorporate the specific trail into their maintenance. Limits. Number six would be that the form of the permit is a watershed access agreement. So it's more into the weeds of indemnification, insurance requirements, stop work authority, et cetera. And that number seven, that no ground disturbance will occur prior to issuance of a Bonner County stormwater and grading permit as well as in erosion and sediment control. And then, so those are the staff's recommendations, one through seven. And then last but not least, we're asking you to have, to consider if any additional conditions are warranted specifically around liability, given the fact that Idaho recreational use statute provides immunity from, to the city from liability for landowners who are provided recreational purposes without charge. So as long as we're not charging anyone and POP's not charging anyone to be on the trail, that statute would apply. However, that's not all encompassing necessarily. There's still some expenses that, should there be a lawsuit that we may be subject to and therefore consideration of requiring an additional condition for POP to keep and maintain liability insurance on the trail improvements themselves. So not just during the trail construction, but beyond that, given the design and the intended use of the trails on our property.
Okay, so council, let's break this down and let's, let's look at the one through seven staff recommendations first. And does council have any questions regarding those? And is council in agreement that those seven conditions are appropriate?
Mr. Mayor, I did have one question. The, the one acre of disturbance is that enough acreage so that the full trail distance can be, it is. And I assume that you'd had those discussions, but that just seems less than I would expect. But, okay, thank you.
It's a great question. There's been a couple of numbers you'll see in Jason's presentation as well as in the application. The 2.4 is relatively conservative. As he mentioned, they need to have a little bit of flexibility. Building the trail. That's why we put this overarching condition in there because once you go over an acre, you really start to trigger different environmental concerns and permits that are required. So it's kind of a whole different animal. So keeping that at the limit gives them some guidelines as they're making those decisions in the field as well.
Thank you.
Great. So any other further questions? It seems that we have consensus on those staff recommendations. Okay, we're in agreement there. And then secondly, does council want to consider liability of this project? And perhaps consider additional protections for the city, either in the form of additional insurance carried by POP with the city listed as additional insured? Or perhaps limiting the features that could be perceived as maybe outside of the scope of the protection of Idaho Code 361604? How does, how does council feel?
I think we'd be looking for a recommendation from Fonda on that one.
Well, maybe a little more explanation, if that's okay. So the only issue that's really presenting, as you can see from the statute, there's immunity for both POP and for the city for allowing land that you own to be used for recreational purpose without charge. The issue that comes up are the extra features, which are what make this trail special, you know, bridges and improvements beyond just a dirt trail. So the, the recommendation for liability insurance isn't necessarily because we think you're going to have liability for someone getting hurt up there. It's that there's always a cost to defend. So you could, POP as well as the city, you could be in $20,000, $30,000 in legal fees just to get out on a motion to dismiss for failure to state a claim on your immunity rights. And so the recommendation for liability insurance is really for a cost to defend if, if there's a lawsuit that's filed. Not as much a concern about damages themselves, but because of the features that are improvements beyond just a dirt trail that could, you know, somebody could get hurt, your cost to defend is what we were really looking at there.
Thank you for that clarity, clarification, Fonda. Appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Almost. Go ahead.
I would like to point out that on city beach, we also have docks that people aren't supposed to dive off. And we have logs that people jump off and dive off. I'd point out that we also have a skateboard park. And we're not requiring the group that originally got together to encourage the city to build that on parks property, on city property to carry additional liability. So I would have a hard time pushing a small volunteer club that mainly runs on grants to have additional liability insurance when we don't, when we have plenty of other features within city parks, such as slides and whatnot, that we already assume liability for. So I, I know that there may be built bridges, but it sounds like the specs of those bridges are through the National Forest Service and they're pretty sturdy and significant. So I'm not sure how this particular case is different from our other parks and things that we provide for our citizens here in Sandpoint.
And Fonda, to that point, so we were covered by our insurer. The name is escaping me right now. ICRIM. So they would, they would cover an instance like that. And so, I mean, in that sense, we're already covered, just like we are for.
That's correct. We were purely have been asked to provide a legal opinion with regards to this, given the improvements. And so this is a legal opinion that we're providing. I appreciate Councilwoman Rule's comments and, and that is true. There are other areas within the city. It's just noting that there are going to be features that are in addition to just a dirt trail that could create liability. You are covered under ICRIM. And, and it's most likely if something happens up there, anybody who files a claim is going to make a claim against POP and the city together anyways, because POP is responsible for maintaining those features going forward. So.
But the city would be covered through ICRIM, correct?
For damages, yes.
But not for legal fees?
It did, it just depends.
I see.
That's not guaranteed.
It would, Mr. Mayor, it was the recommendation, not only of our legal counsel, but also our risk manager through ICRIM, that this be an element considered by city council.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Is there any precedent for that elsewhere? Have they looked at other cities? Do they force other volunteer organizations to carry liabilities for features and whatnot built on city properties? Or is it just simply a legal opinion at this point?
It's a legal opinion at this point. Your risk manager through ICRIM would have been looking at statewide situations that would have created that recommendation.
Okay, but we initially, we are covered as a city. So it's really, to me, I feel like we're pushing our decision upon POP. If they want to take that risk and not have their own liability insurance, I think that that would be, as an organization, their right to decide where, you know, their funds are best spent.
Sure. It's your choice as a council whether or not to have it be a condition. And then of course, if you decide not to include the liability insurance as a condition, that's their choice whether or not to carry insurance. That's correct.
But we, we do require them to have liability while they're building the trail as, correct? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I concur with Councilwoman Rule. And so would we be setting a precedent if we are asking them to provide liability insurance? Then would other groups be asked the same? The skate park, the groups that Councilwoman Rule brought up?
I don't know. I wasn't involved in any of your previous projects. So asking me what you have done previously, I would have to defer to city staff for that. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
One point of difference, and Jennifer can certainly speak to this as well or add to it. Two points of clarity. Number one, what we mean by features is not just the bridges that are crossing the streams. It's the potential for things like drops and jumps, right? More of that expanded type of trail is what brought it to the liability discussion. That's what brought it forward. Second is it's, it's not typical that we have an outside entity doing maintenance on our property. So for example, the skate park is maintained by city staff, not by another entity. So for example, if a drop was constructed in the watershed and POP didn't maintain it, right? And it became a hazard to the public, one may perceive that as a higher risk versus on our own city property where we're maintaining slides, we have more control of that risk. So that was the purpose of the discussion. It's certainly not intended to make a recommendation. It's merely a point of conversation, recognizing that there are more things than just bridges across the stream being proposed in the application.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, go ahead, Annie.
Since the executive director of POP is here, can we ask him to address this? We can. I have to reopen the public hearing, public hearing to have additional discussion with the public. But yeah, we can do that.
Mr. Mayor, you might want to point out that this is an easy uphill trail that is not going to have those types of features on it in the future. There may be another trail that is proposed that does have those features, but this particular trail, as it's going to be a hiking trail and a walking trail, I sure hope they're not planning on putting a four foot drop that I'm going to walk off of or take my children off of. So this is going to be a flat, easy, climbable trail that is less difficult than the existing trail that is already there and probably a heck of a lot safer without the roots and natural things that are there and running up the gas line straight and causing the erosion problems. So I think we're going beyond where we need to go at this point. In the future, yes, I think that's a possibility. What I'd also like to point out, as I've got the microphone and then I'll be done. Maybe it's a long time overdue that the city step up and start maintaining these trails. We have 200 riders a day in a 10 day period, a lot of them locals. Our master recreation plan is people crying out for trails. So why are we pushing off the city's responsibility onto a nonprofit organization that finds all their money in grants and has 30 and 40 wonderful individuals out there volunteering to maintenance trail for everyone? So that's something to be looked at at a later date, but I think it's getting to a turning point and well overdue that the city starts to take on its responsibility for maintaining trails that their citizens are asking for and using. Thank you.
Good point, counselor. At this point, I'd like to open up the public hearing again so we can have hopefully some more comment from Mr. Walker. Thank you. If you could address the counselor's question and anything else that you've heard up here that you want to speak to, please do.
First, just echoing Deb, I mean, this is, it was originally thought of as a green trail, so there aren't going to be advanced features on this particular trail. I don't want to promise that we never are going to ask to build more advanced trails. That's definitely in our plans and there's a very high level of demand for more advanced trails. But I would suggest that maybe we revisit this when the license agreement is renegotiated or amended, which is something I think, think you're going to have to hear in the future. That would give us, I'm not necessarily opposed to getting liability insurance. Of course, I want to protect our board and I want to protect myself and our membership and our organization. I did, after seeing this in the staff report, reach out to our insurance agent. She's already reaching out to our underwriters to see what that would entail. So I'm not saying we never should do this. I'm just saying to put it as a, as a required condition for approval today, it would, I think we don't have enough information right now. And it's not necessarily, given that this is a, an easy, easier trail than any of the trails that currently exist. And actually, it's actually going to increase safety in the lower basin right now. But I, it is something I've, I've already reached out and inquired about. But I, I would urge you not to make it a condition for approval tonight.
Okay. And can you hang tight for one more second? Is there any other questions that the council has, now that we've kind of opened up the can a little bit more? Any other questions that you want to put before Mr. Walker? Okay, thanks, Jason. Appreciate it.
And Mr. Mayor, I can affirm that can be dealt with during the renegotiation of the license agreement as well.
Perfect. Okay. Okay, does council feel good, informed, ready to make a decision? Okay, let's hear, let's just go around the corner if we can.
You need a motion to amend your motion.
Sorry?
You need a motion to amend the previous motion because it was already seconded.
Okay, so I would entertain, well, let's hear this first before we get there. I want to hear where there's consensus on the liability issue. And if each counselor can weigh in on that, that'd be great. Then we can just expedite this.
Mr. Mayor, I feel comfortable with the coverage we have under ICRIM. And I think that their liability insurance can be dealt with at a later date.
Thank you.
I'm comfortable with the later date negotiation also.
Great.
Me as well.
All right. Sounds like we're on the same page here. Great. In that case, I would entertain a motion to amend the main motion to include the seven stated conditions, staff recommended conditions in the packet.
So moved.
Second.
It's removed and seconded. Is there any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilman Darling?
Yes.
Councilman Groth?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Spurrow?
Yes.
Motion passes. Now back to the main motion. This will be a roll call vote.
Mr. Mayor, would you like me to recall the vote? I have.
Let's do that.
Councilman Spurrow?
Yes.
Councilman Groth?
Yes.
Councilman Darling?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
Now it's time to clap. Yes.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Yes.
Motion passes. And. Thank you, Pondore Peddlers, for all that you do for our community. It's really impressive. So thank you for your partnership with the city. Okay, next on the agenda. Under new business this evening are three abrogation easements proposed for right-of-way property along Boyer Avenue and Schweitzer Cut Off Road, which is in Sandpoint Airport's runway protections zone or RPZ. A parcel owned by the city fronting Schweitzer Cut Off Road in the RPZ, and a parcel owned by the city at the southeast corner of Boyer Avenue and Schweitzer Cut Off, which is partially in the RPZ. Independent appraisals valuing the abrogation easements have been completed and purchase offer, and purchase offer made by Bonner County Airport in the amount of the appraised value. Are you going to do, we're not doing this, are we?
You're going to hand it over to me, and I'm going to.
Okay. Okay, sorry about that. I, yeah. City Administrator Jennifer Stapleton will give us an update on this, this thing that we're not going to vote on.
Okay, good.
At this time, I would recommend that the council review the revised. We received revised legal descriptions from the county this afternoon, revised offers related to this, and we have enough time to fully vet and review those. And it was unclear to staff and our attorney this afternoon why we were receiving revised legal descriptions. So we will likely be bringing this forward to council at a later date with potentially some revisions. I did speak with Dave Shook at the airport about this this afternoon, and he was not clear as to what were all the changes that had been submitted to the city today either.
Okay. So do we need a motion? And, okay. So I would entertain a motion to remove this item from the agenda, and we need to table it to a specific date, don't we?